Today is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, and the board meeting is now called to order. It is 6:01 PM. At this time, Dr. Chandergary, will you read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, Chair, thank you. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapueya, who are represented by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Round and the Confederate tribes of the Salits Indians. The relationship between the Kalapueya people and this land continues unbroken to this day, and we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people. Thank you.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Thank you. We will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This is one of our last quiet-ish reports before we are back fully into the hum of the school year. And so I'll just briefly share a few of the things that our team has been up to. So first of all, this week has been a toasty, warm, jumpstart kindergarten. We have our incoming kindergarten classes open in all of 42 of our buildings. We've been talking to principals. While it's been warm, it has also been spectacularly joyful. They're getting to meet their new kinders for the first time, help orient them, teach them how to be in a kindergarten classroom, and get a sense of all of the families who will be joining them in a few short weeks. We also kicked off the school year with all of our district and school leaders last week. They were together for a full week of learning and planning, and it was wonderful to be there together. I also want to thank a couple of our board members who were able to join for a little bit of our kickoff event. And then, in more specific news, we are also pleased that this year we are rolling out 25,000 new desks and chairs to almost 375 classrooms throughout Salem Kaiser. It's taken us almost a year to do all of the conversations about what a great classroom set looks like, what our teachers want to bid them, procure them, buy them, receive them, and get them out into schools. Most of them will be in for the start of the school year, and a few more will trickle in through the fall and winter. So we're excited to have classrooms with great new furniture. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge good news that came through since we were last together at a business meeting, which is the release of the federal fiscal year 25 funding. When we last talked about this, we shared that we were prepared to use reserves in order to continue critical programming. That funding has since been released. It's not now new money for us to spend. It just preserves our reserves and allows us to continue providing great services to kids and families. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, Chair.
Thank you. For the record, I want to make sure that it's noted that all school board members are present. It is now time for the public comment portion of the school board meeting. As a reminder, we provide an opportunity for public comment virtually, in person, or in writing. Tonight, there was no signups for public comment. Next on our agenda is the ratification of the Salem Kaiser Education Association and Salem Kaiser Public Schools collective bargaining agreement for 2527. Before we take any board action, I'd like to introduce SKEA representatives, Tyler Skiloh-Lakeberg and Marlene Ellis, to say a few words and introduce members of their bargaining team.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Richardson. It's wonderful to be here and to have this part of our work ready to put, sign and put behind us. We don't have members of our bargaining team with us. However, we believe that they are probably following along virtually. And the main message that we want to send to both our board, district leadership, and our membership is that we appreciated the recent process that we wrapped up on June 20th to bring together our perspectives, our ideas, and our plans for the future in the form of a collective bargaining agreement that met the needs of both parties. We believe that it is a sign and an example of collaboration that we hope to continue. We have absolutely the same desired end goal, which is fantastic Salem Kaiser Public Schools and great student success. When we have those things, we believe that our staff will be happy as well. And that's good news. There isn't bad news, but there's a caution. And that caution is we continue to strike this balance between providing teachers and other educators with adequate time to prepare to do their very important jobs and district leaders and professional developers time to provide input so that those educators can do their jobs. And I think that that balance is where we will perhaps continue to have different perspectives. But I see lots of positive in our future, and I hope you do as well. I'll ask Tyler, who, as president, led us through our most recent bargain, to add a few words.
I'll just say, I'm sure the district agrees that since the last three school years we have been engulfed in bargaining, we will have this next year without it. So looking forward to that and then, you know, continuing building on the relationships. And, you know, we will continue to work through disagreements and agreements and all the challenging issues that we face as a district. So we look forward to this next year.
Thank you. Superintendent Castaneda, is there anything else before we move to ratify?
We just want to, I think, reiterate what you've heard from our SKEA leaders. This was comparatively a very, like, expeditious, efficient, thoughtful bargain. I think that we covered a lot of difficult territory, but we did it with a lot of mutual respect and worked to find that space in the middle that reflects the very best that bargaining can be, which is a balance of sometimes conflicting needs while still being totally committed to the same results. And it is always the case that has to be true for both parties for a bargain to be successful the way that this one was. And we just really thank you and your bargaining team.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to ratify the 252027 collective bargaining agreement between Salem Kaiser School District 24J and Salem Kaiser Education Association? At this time, Director Satie has moved. Is there a second? Mail, Director Mail has seconded. Is there any discussion?
I do.
Yes.
I just want to thank you, Chair, for letting me share. I really want to thank you both and your team. But through you, I want to thank all our teachers. You know, with our teachers, you're like the priests of the Temple of Education, literally. That's how I see. And that's the kind of dignity and respect we have to give our teachers. You know, historically, teachers are so pivotal in that transformation, yet in a comparative job with the same qualification, they have been getting about 20, 25% less than what they would have got in the private sector and the other market. That's the unfortunate fact. And with a lot of things going on, the pandemic and everything else, a lot of things got added, right? And there are a lot of unfunded, do this, do that. So I really think, personally, seeing, learning from the last six years, it's almost like taking an IMIC patient and trying to give one or two times blood transfusion, then tell them, go run 10 laps in the ground, and then wonder why they are not running so fast. I think it's time, as calm bear, all parties have to honestly say, how do we align together? And ask for a very progressive educational, public education funding model like Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, et cetera, rather than, if you see our education funding model, it has been what is described as a regressive education funding model. It's not sustainable as challenges get added and everything else gets added. So my hope is, we take this opportunity whether, and say, we have to do an honest costing study, how much it really costs if you have a small classroom of 15 to 18 or 20 students? Because then we can start bringing the trajectory back. And that's the kind of frustration I see. It's not like that I don't want to support getting them to the industry standard. Unfortunately, the pot is so small, and you're asking a lot of other things which are restricted, demands that are put on thing. And it's not sustainable, in my opinion, at least in the six years, the way I've seen. I can't run a hospital that way and have enough doctors and nurses dealing with it. So I really think it's time, though people may look at it from different vantage point, from a union or from the board or from other entities, we need to ask two important questions in Oregon because our constitution's demand, Oregon constitution demand, educational funding has to be equity-based. It's enshrined in our constitution. The second thing is, are we doing a proper costing study? Our, you know, from 1995 onwards, whatever costing, if you believe that, it has never been matched proportionate to that. It is not sustainable. It only keeps adding problems year after year after year. And the third thing is, to honestly ask, are there things that are unfunded things that are being added and added? And then it has to come out of the general fund. Where else will it come from? Which really competes with the other pieces. So my hope is, moving forward, there is that alignment. And then together, we can all speak with one voice saying, can we drastically change our funding model to match? Like, we can copy, steal, borrow from Massachusetts or Pennsylvania or something else and say, what, the worst thing that will happen is we'll get better. So that is my hope. Otherwise, we'll keep having this scarcity and tension, and that's what I worry. So hopefully, that's my two cents. So thank you very much. We can't do this work without our teachers. And please convey a sincere gratitude to them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of ratifying the 2527 collective bargaining agreement between Salem Kaiser School District 24J and Salem Kaiser Education Association, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you all very much. Do they sign tonight on the dotted line?
Don't believe so, but I, we know where you live. We'll run it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's that time of year when the board accepts nominations for the Oregon School Boards Association, Board of Directors, and Legislative Policy Committee positions. As a reminder, there must be a majority vote of four board members to select a nominee. This year, nominations are open for position 11 on the Board of Directors as well as positions 11 and 12 on the Legislative Policy Committee. Nominations will be taken individually by position. We'll start by taking nominations for position 11 on the Board of Directors. No seconds are required. Do I have a nomination for the OSBA Board of Directors, position 11 for the Marion County Region?
I've got a nomination. Thank you. So I believe with his experience of serving rural Oregon counties in the last 25 years as a psychiatrist, having served our Salem Kaiser Board for the past six years and the longest-serving board member during some pretty tough challenges, that he will be the best candidate to represent our rural and urban communities in Marion County. I would like to nominate Director Dr. Satia Chandergary. Thank you.
Director Richardson, I have a nomination as well.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Karina Guzman Ortiz.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over at this time to Ashley Stovin.
Thank you, Chair. Since we have two nominees, I will go down a roll call vote. So when I say your name, say the name of the individual you're voting for. Just a reminder, we need four votes to move someone forward. Chair Cynthia Richardson?
Director Guzman Ortiz?
Director Guzman Ortiz?
Guzman Ortiz.
Director Harnish? Director Guzman Ortiz? Director Parker?
Director Satia Chandergary?
Director Chandergary?
Satia Chandergary.
Director Hudson?
Director Chandergary. Thank you.
Director Fuller?
Director Guzman Ortiz.
Okay, that is four for Director Guzman Ortiz for position 11 on the board.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Fuller, for the nomination, and thanks to my colleagues for the vote. I look forward to, I've been serving on the OSBA Board, Region 11 seat, I believe since February. I stepped in as there was a vacancy and I was appointed. And so I look forward to being able to serve a full term now that I understand a little bit more of what that work looks like and providing those updates to you all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to nominate? We'll start by taking nominations for position 11 on the Legislative Policy Committee. No seconds are required.
I have a nomination.
Yes.
I guess I'd like to nominate Director Fuller.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Director Fuller, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. Do I have a, are there any additional nominations for Policy Committee Position 11? Oh, I'm sorry. Got behind. It must be the best stage. Sorry. Finally, we'll take nominations for position 12 on the Legislative Policy Committee. No seconds are required. Do I have a nomination for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position 12 for the Marion County Region?
Yes. I would like to nominate Director Chrissy Hudson for Legislative and Policy Committee, position 12 for Marion Region. She will be fantastic in representing all families and, you know, and with her experience in our day-to-day job and the way she has served, I think everybody will be heard and seen. So I would like to nominate Director Hudson.
Are there any additional nominations? Yes.
I'd like to nominate Director Lisa Harnish. Sorry, blanked on your name. Your last name, if you have that nomination.
Are there any discussions? I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley Stovin at this time.
Okay, we'll proceed with roll call again. Chair Cynthia Richardson?
Director Harnish.
Director Guzman Ortiz?
Director Harnish.
Director Harnish? Harnish. Director Parker?
Hudson. Director Hudson.
Director Chandergary?
Director Chrissy Hudson, please.
Director Hudson? Director Hudson, please, thank you. Director Fuller?
Director Harnish, please.
Okay, that's four for Director Harnish.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, I would just like to say thank you so much for the nomination. I'm truly honored to be a part of this. I do consider myself a little bit of a legislative watcher and a little bit of a legislative junkie, so I'm actually kind of excited about this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Our board clerk will work with each nominee to have the official paperwork completed and submitted to OSBA. Next on the agenda are the first readings for the revisions to the executive limitation policies. Five, staff compensation and professional development, and 12, legally required policies. Superintendent Castaneda, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Chair. So, board members, you might recall at our retreat that we talked about the general policy governance approach and reviewed a small subset of executive limitations and one results policy that we propose for discussion and revision this year. This is mostly because we have some policies that are as much as, like, 14 or 15 years old. And they are such an important part of your toolkit that they bear discussion and updating on a cycle more frequent than 10 years. We are bringing two, what are really, I think, the most straightforward of the revisions to you tonight. And the first one that we'll be discussing is staff compensation and professional development. The proposal that we're bringing for your consideration here is really focused on just clarifying the important role of staff compensation and making sure that we have competitive wages with the importance of ongoing professional learning, the love our staff to feel capable, respected, fulfilled, and able to advance if they so choose, balanced with the very real fiscal constraints that we face every day in trying to achieve our district goals, support our team, and maintain a healthy financial state. The previous version of this was clear about our responsibility to provide a competitive wage and provide professional development. But I feel that it lacked the acknowledgement that it also requires a balance around fiscal prudence. And so the bulk of the edits that you see here really focus on bringing that into the equation. So for example, it says, "The superintendent shall not fail to develop, negotiate, and implement compensation plans and professional development opportunities that balance workforce needs, district goals, and financial constraints." This is, we hope, a straightforward but important balance that gets added to this language, and we turn it over to you for discussion.
Two minutes, please.
Yeah, I really appreciate you bringing that. The third piece to it is kind of making sure we stay within our fiscal responsibility. And hopefully, that means we'll maintain a decent end fund balance which matches the policy. If there is some of the financial administrative policies, if there is co-mingling of funds, then we'll kind of put it back to the right budget. And, you know, we went through difficult times when we didn't have sufficient informed oversight of that. And it's not worth repeating. So this is really a good fiduciary duty of board members and also the leaders. And so thank you for introducing that element and calling it out especially, you know, otherwise it's so emotional we can get carried away without paying attention to that. So that was really important to us.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Superintendent. It was helpful to read the draft language, and it does add clarity. I was curious around where, I think, line three, create employee compensation-related obligations over long-term that revenues can prudently be projected. I just wanted clarity on that alignment with our bargaining timing and legislative decision, kind of that fiscal piece. Where does that align? And where might we need to adjust a little bit in terms of our bargaining timelines? I will say it was great to hear that we have a year of reprieve.
Thank you. I'm gonna restate and make sure I understand your question. I think you're saying that, given that we're, let's set aside federal uncertainty right now. Because we're a biennial state, we have fiscal certainty that really runs on the biennium. So I think you're asking, what happens when we have bargaining agreements that make assumptions or educated guesses about what revenue will look like in a new biennium before that is known? Is that what you're asking about? I think that this is, so first you'll see the edit here is really just to specify that, while this is a general financial obligation, this EL is about staff compensation and the cost of professional development. So the edit there is just to clarify that portion. And I think that practically speaking, we will always be in a situation where we are about to enter into where our negotiating contracts that cross biennium. But what I think that you should expect of a superintendent and a superintendent's team is that when we're making revenue projections, they're based on reasonable criteria and assumptions about what will happen in the future. We can't always get to certainty given the overlapping nature of contracts in the biennium. But I think that you should expect that we would bring clear criteria to you. So for example, if we were to say, this forecast is built on the assumption of a 10% revenue increase in the new biennium, you should have questions about why we think there'll be a 10% revenue increase in the new biennium. If we fail to bring you that forecast at all, you should have questions and concerns. And I would call that an executive limitation violation. If, however, we say, we're bringing you this, and it's based on a 5% revenue increase, that is grounded in the criteria of the current service level adjustment, which is now statutory, then you have more reason to think that it's not a violation. It is an educated guess.
Thank you. Think about, what might that actually look like?
Can I just follow up on the question that Karina asked, Chair?
Yes.
So when we are making the staff compensation, sorry, when we are making the staff compensation based on an educated guess, how do you factor in for inflation and others? based on an educated guess, how do you factor in for inflation and others? That affects the staff have to still rent a home or buy a home and, you know, buy food and things like that. So, really, we face that the inflationary pressures are such. Are our projections taking into consideration the cost of living or inflationary pressures that our staff members are facing? Or, you know, in some parts of Salem, you can't buy a home for less than a million or half a million for a single place, or about $2,500 rent for two-bedroom home near cross-level, in and around area. So how are we taking into consideration if we have a policy? Is there a percentage or we just say this will be open enough to say that will be considered? Am I making sense?
I think so. I'm going to restate and see if I understand. You're saying this EL and this discussion raises for you the question of how we consider the Consumer Price Index as we build out a bargaining proposal and as we engage in bargaining through a session.
Correct, because whatever is left will be for professional development. In the sense, something will have to be squeezed out, right?
Well, it's always zero-sum, so for sure, definitely, things are getting squeezed out. I would say that that is very much the way that bargaining is a natural check and balance on this.
Okay.
So let's say that we were in a scenario of a 4% Consumer Price Index growth, and let's further say that we came to the bargaining table and insisted on a 0% COLA. That would be a scenario in which the table itself will create a check and balance and say, well, the real buying power for our staff is diminishing. How is our compensation keeping pace? I will add to that very briefly, though, that while that is a check and balance that happens at the bargaining table, there is not a CPI escalator built into the state funding formula. So just because our staff deserve it and we feel that it is just and appropriate to pay it out doesn't mean we get that money from the state. And this is the dilemma that school districts everywhere and government everywhere is facing with an unstable economy and increasing uncertainty about inflation.
Yeah, that is the reason I kind of raised the concept of the school funding approach. The model that is being used does not consider, and hopefully the union will join everybody else or whoever else and try to ask for a legislature to completely revamp the model, which really takes into consideration what you just said, because they are just doing continued service level, like essentially with a little bit. But I don't know on what basis they can adjust for that, because that really affects the pocketbook of our teachers and staff and whether they can rent a place. They may like the job, but they can't rent a place, then it kind of gets them out of the perp pool. So hopefully, that should, it's not part of the EL, but some, hopefully, whoever is kind of, now we have so many members in the legislative and committee, they can really use that as a way to bargain in the, with the legislature, that old model is not working.
Thank you. Are you going to do two?
Yes, I am. So EL 12 is also, I consider to be a pretty straightforward set of edits. And this was last revised in 2014, so it's about 10 years old. And what you'll see here, the language that is stricken is, is really, it's transitional language from that moment. It is a policy that directs the district to, as part of a conversion to policy governance, encode a bunch of previous district policies in, board policies into district policies. That has since all happened, and also this list is now out of date because in the last 10 years, different state laws requiring different forms of action have been taken. Rather than have an exhaustive list that we have to update every year, we're proposing language that just makes it clear that the superintendent in the district is always responsible for maintaining a policy infrastructure that meets state and federal requirements. And so that is how a long EL becomes a very short EL. And I'll turn it over to you, Chair, for discussion.
Any discussion?
I don't.
Two minutes, please.
Yeah, I actually sent a suggestion, a friendly amendment to this and see what you think. The, like, 4.4, I thought, will introduce superintendent shall not fail to send the required civil rights data, including the pertaining, that pertaining to student discipline to the Civil Rights Collection, Data Collection Office of Civil Rights, U.S. Department of Education, for their public-facing data reporting. Because in my review of the CRDC site, it often says the data is not available, and our A.D., Oregon Department of Education, is supposed to get it out and make it public-facing, but it's very difficult to figure out where it is behind so many places. So I find this is very important to address this and close, as it helps us and the communities to help close the inequities and also ensure we are protecting the civil rights of everyone. In 2021, we had identified some gaps in our reporting. For example, we discovered that we were not adequately reporting or accurately reporting student discipline, use of law enforcement in schools, and arrest. So we talked about fixing it. So when I went and checked, just even today, those, it says data not available, data not available. Some other states have their data available. So I was just really thinking, what if we make it as part of our EL? Not just the policy, but at least one aspect of that is happening because one can have policy, but then it kind of gives us an opportunity to make sure those pieces are put in place, there is informed oversight on that.
Thank you for that, and also thank you, Dr. Shandra Gary, for sending it in advance. That actually enabled us to do a little bit of background work. So I do want to clarify that we have been submitting them on time every year and have the certificates of submission. It's difficult for us to control what ODE does with them or how they get then shared on the federal website, but we are submitting them. I also think this is a very thoughtful approach to thinking about how an executive limitation works because, while I'm not sure I agree entirely with the language that you propose, I do think that it's the right intent. And so what I wanted to offer to the board is a slightly more expansive alternative. You're naming one of many federally required data submissions. I think we could expand it to say that the superintendent shall not fail to submit accurate and timely state or federally required data reports, and then it is inclusive of, but not limited to this one. And then I would also recommend along with that that we modify the title of this EL to be Legally Required Policies and Data Submissions. And then, yes, and what you have actually just done is really demonstrate how an executive limitation can be used to achieve policy goals that the board deems important.
Thank you for including everything, because obviously you all report over 50-plus, 60 different types of reporting, because all of them are restricted funding. You know, so I just picked one as an example to illustrate. But it's also important because it really captures the essence of what we should be doing, you know. So I think, I like the idea, and that also gives an opportunity for you to submit a report saying, these are the data elements we are reporting to the feds, the state. So it gives anyone of us or the community an opportunity to go and say, where is it? What is going on? So it kind of gives us a checks and balance. Our goal is for our department to, our, or, school to, suddenly somebody should come around and say, oh, this was missing, so we think you are a civil rights violation or something else. You know, what you read in the newspaper kind of becomes alarming. So that's the reason, now, my job as this, I have a fiduciary duty to protect our district, as simple as that. So it is for me that is one, and then we represent the children and families, so that's another piece. So I think this is the intent behind me pointing this out and saying, what if it becomes part of the EL? And I want to hear my fellow board directors' thoughts on this. Will this help us perform our fiduciary oversight responsibility and also be responsive to the community when we go talk to them?
So I would say with the amendment language, which will be, I think, forthcoming to us, I do think that it does round out the policy so that we can see that data is a part of. It's a separate activity, but then we also have the ability to kind of know what is being submitted and when. I think that's, that's really helpful, and I appreciate you bringing it up, and I also appreciate the willingness of the district to sort of think about it holistically and not just pulling out one particular data set.
Thank you.
I agree, that's helpful, and actually, it kind of goes along the lines of my question. So if we were, just to reiterate quick, we're, we're pulling out each of these that are, that are crossed out. So what would be the other place that we could check for transparency to see? Because you say these are, we don't need them here because they already exist elsewhere. So when we receive these types of questions, and I could name a few to list here, like graduating requirements, discipline, you know, requirements and such, and expulsions. And where would we direct a community member to find those?
The district policy. There's a page on our, portion on our website that's searchable, you can find all of our district policies.
So it is just made there in the district policies, so it's a reiteration. Okay, thanks.
So with your permission, I think what we'll do is you'll see, and this is the first read, you'll see an edited version come back to you for our next meeting in action. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Castaneda, do you wish to provide further review of any item on the consent calendar?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Director Harnish? Is there a second? Yes. Director Parker? Thank you. At this time, we'll take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Aye, it's unanimous. As a reminder, everything in the Information Standard Reports section is provided for the board's review ahead of the meeting. That takes us to our Board Reports section of the agenda, where our directors and student advisors will share work from formal committee assignments and activities of the board related to youth programs and school district activities since the last board meeting. At this time, we'll start with, who's been the quietest? Director Parker.
Yes, hello, yes. I just got back from a three-day conference, very informative, learned a lot. The week before, we had our board retreat. Also, I was able to go to the summer graduation, was incredible. It was such a joy to see all those students graduate and fulfill, you know, move to the next step, fulfill their dreams, and it was exciting to see. Yeah, it just, it meant very much to me. I had a great time there.
Thank you.
Director Fuller?
Thank you. So I also attended the summer graduation, and it is the first time that I, as a school board member, that I got to shake the hands and congratulate students for finishing their high school careers. It was, it was a little electric. It was exciting and hot. But that was definitely a first, and I hope, I know that I'll get many more opportunities, and it's, it's just really inspiring to me. I attended, since our last meeting, I also attended a town hall with Dan Rayfield, Tom Anderson, Deb Patterson, and Paul Evans. And I, and I heard people sharing the struggles that they're enduring under the current federal administration. It inspired me to explore ways that I can make myself more accessible to our community. So stay tuned for some announcements of expansions, not only my office hours, but to include some weekends and evenings as well. Just a little bit more. I familiarized myself with chariots and using public transportation over the past couple weeks. My purpose in doing this is to show students and families how easy it is and to highlight more tools to increase community resiliency. My kids certainly appreciate not having to wait for me to feel like giving them a ride somewhere. They can just take the bus. And finally, as families, you know, we're starting to transition out of the autopilot-ness of summer and get back into the school year mode, putting the kibosh on the all-nighters from our, from our kids. I know that the latest drop of a Fortnite season didn't help that at all. You know, establishing wake-up times, schools close shopping, school supplies, talking about school year expectations, setting up the family calendar, that is a ton of work, and I just want to recognize all the work that families do in that to set up students for success for this new school year. Summer goes by so fast. And I think, did I have anything else? Oh, last, yes, last. I just wanted to, you know, earlier in the summer, I encouraged parents to get to know the parents of their, of their kids' friends. I wanted to check in, ask everybody how that's going. And also, I wanted to urge parents, this is especially important, is to make sure that your contact information is updated as your students start their new school year this year. Make sure that you know how to get ahold of the school and that the school knows how to get, how to get ahold of you. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Dexter?
Sure, yeah. I, so I, my favorite part about this, this part of summer is just how extracurriculars, sports, music are all ramping up. I personally know, I have a friend who's doing soccer. I see people out in the football field. I see people practicing tennis, which is awesome. I'm, I'm in band camp. Band camp's going well. So I, I'm getting really excited for all of our activities. Yeah.
Thank you. Did an advisory lead?
I'm getting really excited for back to school, but also, like, it's sad summer's ending, but really excited. I've gotten to hang out with some of my friends and fellow students, and it's been good to catch up, and I'm really excited to see what this school year brings, and, yes.
Thank you. Director Guzman Ortiz?
Thank you. Keep it brief. I was, last week, got, had an opportunity to join the district leadership, kind of school year kickoff, on that first day, only the first morning, and I will say it was such a joy to be amongst our district administrators who were just so engaged, so committed, so ready to learn and to think about how to support their teams, how to support their schools in this year moving forward. So I want to just give kudos to everyone who spent time organizing it. You could see and you could feel the intention and the energy behind that, and I was only there for a few hours. So I know it was a week-long of activities and learning for administrators, but thank you, and I think it just got me hyped up for the school year to come.
Thank you. Director Harnish?
Yes, thank you so much. So I too was able, with my colleagues, to be able to go to the OSBA conference, which was incredibly informative, so I really appreciated that opportunity and to get to know my colleagues even better. I also just really want to acknowledge our summer graduates. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but just looking at having an additional 87 graduates and four GEDs, that's, that's pretty incredible. And so I loved seeing our number, our graduation rates climb up. Also, it is really exciting this week with kindergarten jumpstart. It is, I guess, it's, it is hard that it was so hot, but maybe it'll kind of help with that transition overall and kind of acclimating kids, and I just know how excited all of those kiddos were, so. And it is the end of summer, and I will admit fully here to the group that I will not be at our next board meeting. I will be on my way to Portugal. I will be on my way to Portugal, and just so happens that I'm going to be missing a meeting, so my apologies, but I will be absent at our next meeting.
I will. That way we can excuse you.
Yeah, okay. Duly noted.
Director Hudson?
Thank you. I just second a lot that was said, and I don't know, it's funny, the, the warmth in the heart that always starts with the new school year all around, and you just always really pray and hope that that passion continues in everyone. I hope that all of our teachers and staff can keep their, pep in their step, even on those hard days, and hopefully that, that just smile from special student or whatever it is kind of refills your cup again. But I'm, I'm thankful you're all here and doing what you do, and thanks.
You've already talked a lot.
Oh, give me a chance, please.
Okay.
All right.
Two minutes.
Well, I'll take less than two minutes. I'll yield the rest of the time to you. Chair, it was, you know, I really appreciate the radio, where I got an opportunity to talk about executive orders signed by governor on cellphone and what that means, what are the pros and cons, and why it's, how to kind of approach it, and what we have been doing. So it was a good opportunity to discuss that. The same part of the radio interview, we got to talk about Braver Angels, where, you know, we tried to bring people together and have a conversation. We had a very nice workshop, which was attended by even our mayor, city mayor, on how to skillfully disagree, how to, so it was very well-attended. And I also got an opportunity, thanks to the retreat, I really loved it. But I got an opportunity to present in a nurse-educated entrepreneur's cafe, they call it, and there were some participants from overseas and many from all over the country to, you know, we shared my lessons I've learned on policy governance and also a working board. So what does a board do? How does it do? And how does it, what lessons I've learned here can help, help them if they choose to run for an office or in a board. It was wonderful. The whole presentation was one hour, and then after that, it went on for another hour. There were participants from international places, so Nigeria, Kenya, Pakistan, and a few other countries joined. So thank you for having the retreat. Thank you for all the lessons I have learned, the community and the my, the district and the board. So I'll be happy to share that YouTube to anybody, but really, what lessons we learned here will help you everywhere.
Thank you.
Less than two minutes. Hello?
With help. I had the privilege of attending the Bow Black and Brilliant Summer Program and seeing all the kids, just learning about their history and just having opportunity to come together and share their experiences. I also attended the summer graduation and was just thrilled to see how many students made it, had that, that endurance and perseverance. Board leadership kickoff was awesome. And I can say, in all of my years as an administrator in Salem Castle Public Schools, that was the best kickoff I've ever experienced. And what I really loved was that all levels are on the same page, speaking the same language and using the same instructional strategies. I've never seen it so well-planned and executed as I did that day. And I want to give a huge shout-out to our superintendent and our executive team for all of the gut work that they did on that. I attended McKay and Grant's Neighborhood Night Out. It was beautiful to see all of the students and families come out and just go from tent to tent and learn about resources available to them. And the food and the dancing and the music, it was just beautiful, simply beautiful. So I'm glad I attended both of those. And I want to make sure everybody knows about the back-to-school backpack and supply drive that will happen this Saturday at People's Church from 12 to 3:00. It's a collaboration with the Arthur Shankle Coalition of Churches, Be Black Foundation, and People's Church. From 12 to 3:00, you can come, they will have bouncy houses, they will have food, they will have free haircuts, they will have raffles, where they'll be giving away bicycles and all types of great things. You don't want to miss it. So be at People's Church on Saturday from 12 to 3:00. And that's it. Let's see my time. It is currently 6:56 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.